Good morning, everybody. We're gonna have work to have an 11:20 hard stop today.
For the public 11:20 hard stop because few of us have to get to it. All right, go ahead.
Good morning. We'll be starting with the Division of Public Services. We'll be on page 536 of your binders and I'll turn over to Tim Kaufman.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Appreciate this opportunity to talk about Division of Public Services and I've got Joan Tammany, Annette Graham, and Adrian Byrne here to help talk about what they do and the important work that they do. So we'll get started here with slides. So workforce strength for the division is much better than it was a year ago. The changes that we made to the pay plans, particularly the comcare pay plan, had a significant impact on their ability to fill vacancies and ultimately deliver services. And so that's, that's good. We've still got work to do across each of the departments. We're not green like some of the other departments that you've seen, but we're making a lot of progress. In terms of the division strategic goals, I want to focus on goal number four because a couple of things have come to light in the last week or so that really caught my attention. So goal four is to enhance culture of innovation, collaboration, customer-centered service. So later this morning, Annette will announce, she just found out that she's going to talk about an award that her department is going to receive. She receives this award routinely for innovation. She brings new programming to the community all the time. And so really proud of that work. Last week I had the opportunity to go to the National Council on Mental Wellbeing Annual Training Conference because Joan wasn't able to go and I had gone to that conference for a number of years in the past. It's been maybe eight years since I've gone. And one thing that has stayed the same is that every time I walk away from that conference, I'm really impressed by how forward-thinking our staff are in terms of the delivery of mental health services. There were a number of different sessions that were being delivered to community mental health centers from across the country about things that we've already implemented here in Wichita. It's really confirming to go to those kind of conferences and see others talk about stuff that we've already implemented. There was lots of sessions where they talked about CCBHC was a potential future intervention for mental health services. Well, we've got one and we've got it going right now. We've got people asking to come see what we're doing and how we're doing it. So that was really affirming for me as well. In the last two or three weeks, we had KADAS received some additional funding in the 20, in their state 2024 budget. They have, we got a call from Interhab asking the CDDO here to think about developing a pilot to implement on how to respond to that request that KADAS has made. The state, our partners, ask us here how we're doing things or they ask us to do new things because they know that we have really smart, really dedicated workforce here trying to solve problems in the community. So it's really good to go to those kinds of conferences, have those kinds of conversations where the people see recognition. So I really appreciate all of that. So into the budget book itself, community programs is a budget that funds primarily the Child Advocacy Center. The CAC works, as you know, to lessen the impact on children that are victims of crimes and reduce the number of times they have to retell their story. And in 2022, the CAC served 1,700 abuser-neglected children and over 1,200 non-offending caregivers. This budget also includes $33,000 in operating support for the Mental Health and Substance Abuse Coalition. This is, 2024 will be the third year of the current three-year agreement with the Mental Health and Substance Abuse Coalition. So that budget request is $238,000. Any questions about that one? There is a decision package request. Child Advocacy Center has received grant funding. We've had this conversation for a long time now. Grant funding for Child Advocacy Center. This funding supports staff. So there are two different funding streams. We funded the Child Advocacy Center in a couple of different ways. So the county stepped up about 10 years ago and started funding them at $120,000 a year. They use that money for staffing. And this is a request to increase funding for the staffing that they have expanded, of course, as they've increased the volume of services they provide. There is there was a follow-up, $85,000 contribution that is matched by the city and the state. And that money is to recognize the increased costs when they moved into their new facility. So just recently, we've heard a request from them about increase, an increase for that operating fund as well. They received confirmation from what the city and the state on that. So I'm going to work with Tom on the recommended and see if there's a way that we change this number. If this makes into the recommended, it may look different when we get to the recommended. Questions about that?
Does here the budget has increased to 2.1 million? How much of that is ours?
Oh, no, no. 200,000, 205,000 right now.
And the city, if it's not matches on that?
That they match us on the 85,000 for the operating, the operating costs. As does the city.
200 and some thousand is what we put in?
Right.
The city of Wichita puts in 85,000?
Correct, yeah. So when the Child Advocacy Center was born, this, the county stepped up at that point in time with a contribution of $120,000 a year. Again, that's money that they spend on salaries. And then after they opened their new facility, because they operated as Child Advocacy Center without a facility for, I think, two or three years, when they opened their new facility, then the city, the county, and the state all contributed 85,000 towards those operating costs. But the county was a lead contributor to the concept of the Child Advocacy Center at that $120,000 amount. Probably 12 years ago now.
I'm not advocating anything against that.
Sure.
My only question is the majority of the workforce there comes out of the city of Wichita. And why aren't we equal parts? Is there some kind of an agreement that is in place? We have a contract. What exactly is that which is the different requirements?
But it was a funding request that came from the commission back 12 years or so ago when the Child Advocacy Center started. At that point in time, it was a commission-led initiative to start that funding agreement. Later, after they bought their facility, after they got their facility, then there was a shared request among the city, county, and state for operating costs associated with that building.
But it looks like it's not balanced. If we review this and ask the city to come up with an equal amount?
I wouldn't. I wouldn't want to ask on behalf of the CAC. We can certainly have another conversation with the CAC if they want to approach other funders. What we've done over time is challenge them to fundraise and they've done that to the point now where they're
It's do we have an agreement with the city on how much that each one of us contributed to the support for CAC?
No, sir. We don't. We've never had that. We've always had a funding agreement with the Child Advocacy Center.
Well, I know that the chairman sits on their board. I don't know if he has similar concerns or not, but I've sat on the board three times and I see the impact. It's a fantastic organization. It's just I don't understand why we're not splitting the cost.
I, I'll admit, I can't tell you what the historical, other than it was a commissioner-led initiative at that $120,000 level years and years ago, and it's been continued since
I'm proud of the city or proud of the county for leading the way to do it all the time. But I think after 10 or 12 years, we need to go back and review this to make sure that we're providing even resources to the CAC.
I think maybe that's a chairman or you're on the board there currently.
I don't think it's ever been discussed.
Yeah, I think that's probably the place to have that discussion on funding and equity.
I would be at the CAC and not with Utah for delay.
I can, but the, the city is at the table of, at the board. So that way all part
They're equal partner and everything, but they're not equal partner in paying.
I will be, I will be glad to ask the city manager to up to we're, this, we take 205 currently. The ask is something north of that now with this decision package. Now be perpetual, correct? That'd be every year.
Yeah.
So I'll make the city manager aware what would be an ask to do. Or we somehow split this up somehow.
Before, I have a problem with what we basically give and then adding those 55,000 to it and the city not stepping up.
Just check clarification. So the, of the 205,000, the 85 is part of that? Is, is part of the 205? And how long is the 33,000 for the substance abuse and mental health coalition? How long has that been, how long has that been part of the total funding here?
2024 would be the third year of the three-year agreement.
Okay, so that's under a three-year agreement for 33,000? Tim, is it two or three?
We just put 33,000 in the 23 budget for mental health and substance abuse coalition after first year. So I think 24 will be the second year.
Okay, okay, my mistake. All right, thank you. Okay, I'm going to turn it over to Joan.
Where's Joan? Morning Chairman and Commissioners. Thank you for bearing with me again. I know you had a lot of my time last week. So like everybody else, we're starting out talking about workforce strengths. You can see last year we were predominantly red and even had purple. This year we're in the yellow. We have made considerable strides since implementing the new CCBHC playpen last September. If you will recall, at our lowest, we were like at 57.5% of staffing, our positions. Up here, it reflects that we're now at 85%. I do want to put a caveat around that because it's 50, it's, it's, it's 85% of the positions we have in the budget. So we have pulled out 50 positions. It was more than that. When we started this, it was like 80 something, but we put, put those positions aside until we have a funding source or a need to fill those because we have caseloads to to necessitate those staff. So if we had those 50 in this budget, our, our percentage of filled positions would be significantly lower. So while we've made significant strides, we still need to continue to grow our provider workforce and eventually the infrastructure that supports that provider workforce. I could say that the clinicians were the hardest to fill positions. If you recall during COVID, we were down to 37, 36 at one point of our clinician pool, which right now is 121 of which 84 are filled. So we still have a ways to go, but I'm very pleased to report that we are making progress. And by making progress, we take some of that stress off the existing workforce who were carrying that load and didn't get a break during those really difficult and challenging times. And then we continuously need to continue looking at integrated care specialists. These are our specialized case managers who do a lot of the day-to-day work with the patients in terms of helping them manage their systems, walk the community, learn the community, learn to live with that mental health issue, whether they're a youth or, or an adult. So I'm very pleased. We're making progress. We do have people applying. We went, we went for 18 months, almost two years without a substance abuse counselor candidate prior to the pay changes. We have filled three of those positions with the pay plan and I anticipate we'll be able to pay more. I feel more of those because it's an equitable wage now versus us being the lowest paid provider in the community. And then clinicians, we have a lot of refer friends going on and that's really rewarding because people like their work enough to want to recommend to somebody they know to come to work for us. But I think the most significant indicator that we're heading down the right path is we have people who have left us who are coming back. That is a routine happening at this point. And there's nothing better than getting people that are already familiar with your system, skilled at doing the work we do, working with the population we're responsible for. All good, all moving in the right direction. I'll have a long way to go. So I did want to put up here because you guys always ask this and, and I know it's not a part of our standard PowerPoint for all divisions, but comcare is unique in that we're heavily revenue-funded, which means that most of our funding comes from the services we deliver that we get paid by Medicare, Medicaid, private insurance. And then in addition to that, we're supplemented with some state grants and some federal grants. And so the total that the County General Fund provides to comcare is 10%. So 10% of our overall budget. We have a pretty robust, just like everybody else, strategic plan. One of our areas of focus over this year and the next couple of years will be trying to make inroads into communities of color who traditionally will not traditionally seek out services because there's a lot of stigma about admitting that you have a mental health issue and you should get help. So we know from talking to our community stakeholders and a lot of grassroots effort, energy groups that we have to be more cognizant that they like a lot of peer support, people who have lived experience to work with them. They also don't want to come into our buildings as often as other people do. So we have to be able to be creative and get into those communities and deliver care where they're at in order for them to more likely seek and voluntarily seek services. We also want to make sure that we're changing the narrative of the story we're telling the community is providing information that has meaning and providing the successes and filling those gaps. Our third strategic initiative is to have strategic partnerships. So you know that we're very heavily engaged with multiple school districts in our Sedgwick County area. Those are really vital. We want to enhance those even further so more youth have access to services in a naturally occurring setting. We work well with the Wichita Police Department and are working through our legal teams to get a contract in place to expand and create for co-responder teams to increase capacity 24/7, it's almost 24/7. I think there's four hours that aren't covered because there's just not a lot of calls to 911. We're strategically working with Alora and 911 to embed a mental health professional who will help triage calls when they get one in 911. So we're dispatching the right response to the right need. We continue to engage in efforts with the sheriff and how we can assist and provide transitional services for people being released from the jail. Evenings and after-hours are really complex. We're also engaged with the state. There's some new legislation around competency restoration, which means we'll take competency evaluations and competency restoration services outside the walls of Larnard State Hospital. So people aren't waiting three years to get those restoration services and hopefully have a more speedy trial so they don't decompensate while they're waiting for that, that thing. So we have a lot of partnerships. Those are just touching on the periphery, but we have a ton more and I'm really proud of that and, and our workforce for engaging in all these creative new opportunities. We've also embraced evidence-based practices as a community mental health center and as a CCBHC or a certified community behavioral health clinic. We have reactivated our support and employment services as well as what's called an assertive community treatment team, which are designed to help people with a lot of intersects with the state hospital and with the criminal justice system so that we have daily contact or daily briefings on those patients. And we reach out to them on a regular basis so they're not falling through the cracks and we're seeing a lot of success with those. Medication-assisted treatment for opioid dependence is another area of growth. We have physicians trained in that. We have to find mechanisms to support. How do we pay for those medications for the under and uninsured? And then our final strategic goal is to enrich workplace pride and engagement. I think we're on our way there, but we need to continue to focus on creating environments that are supportive of the work that we do for both our patients, guests, and most importantly, for the staff that work here. We need to look at how do we provide them increased wellness opportunities so that their overall well-being is robust and they're able to rebound and have a personal life outside of work. And when they're at work, focus on the work they're here to do. So when we talk about our challenges and opportunities, I quite frankly think they're all opportunities. We need to use data in more meaningful way and use it to drive some of our decision-making. We're trying to do that by gathering the required elements as a certified community behavioral health clinic. We want to make sure that care coordination continues to be enhanced. I want to distinguish between care coordination and case management, two very different types of activities. Case management, I talked about that earlier, is where we walk hand-in-hand with our patients and provide them the tools to manage their mental health condition in the community through coping skills, life skills and all of that. That is a service. Care coordination is an activity that we surround our patients with. So we're assessing what are their other social service needs? What do social determinants of health are impacting their life that we can have some success with, but it's helping do that connectedness and staying in touch with that patient. We definitely have and are expanding mobile crisis response to a full 24/7 coverage. Our goal is to always have a response time of less than one hour for 85% of those requests. I will tell you, we've put a charter together for quality improvement. And last month we did out of comcare's crisis mobile team, not the one we're partnering with, with ICT1. We get 73 asks and it's the first month we've ever been able to respond to each one of those. And we did so in .64 hours. So way less than an hour. I'm, I tell you, that is an amazing shift in focus and an amazing response to the community workforce retention and shortages challenges. We're going to have to keep doing that. We have to make sure our staff don't burn out in the process of us building and scaling up our CCBHC. We work with a complex population, they're high need. We see a lot of aggression in our settings. We see a lot of angst that is a charge situation and we're seeing an increased prevalence of, of weapons coming into our facility. So we need to always be mindful of that. And then quite frankly, we need to land our community crisis center. We know we need to expand that. And we know that we want to consolidate those locations because we have multiple locations where our crisis staffers housed right now. Not ideal. It's hard to move people along that continuum and it's hard to maximize the use of our workforce. So real excited about that opportunity. That has been a challenge. We all know that. I want to make sure that we always stay on the forefront of looking, are there extenders in terms of technology? Are there ways for us to put technology in the hand of some of our most complex people and stay in touch with them in more creative ways using technology? And then we have a really awesome substance abuse program manager who I think is probably one of the best in the community and she's trying to read back. We'll build her substance abuse team. We lost every single member of our team during COVID. And we have the potential to do a lot more. Another pride point is last month we did more intakes in substance abuse services than we have since 2020. So we're growing again. And then CCBHC, of course, is our opportunity to fill gaps in our community. Okay, so then when we look at our overall budget for 2024, it's 53,645,371. Again, just a reminder, 10% is general fund.
Thank you, Joan. Appreciate it. Congratulations on the mobile mental health response. That's, that's encouraging.
It's really exciting.
Do we have any sort of estimation of what percentage increase of fees will be for the CCBHC model? The revenue, yeah.
Well, the revenue is based on encounters and it's encounters of Medicaid patients. So here's, let me tell you about a complexity and a nuance for this year. So it's about 70% of our population are Medicaid eligible or insured. If they receive a service or they receive six services, we get an encounter rate for the day. That has the potential to generate significantly more revenue for us that we then put back into Medicaid services. The nuance this year is if you remember during the national declaration of the disaster, they suspended eligibility reviews for Medicaid. So if somebody got on a roster, which was pretty generous during COVID, they stayed on a roster, which not is the historical way of managing Medicaid. On April 1st, the unwinding of that Medicaid stay order started and they have started reviewing people to see if they still remain clinically and financially eligible for Medicaid. There is an estimation that 130 people will drop off the Medicaid rosters this year. Our hope is that we have benefit specialists that we identify people who are now eligible for Medicaid and get them on. So we're hoping to supplement that with new people going on to that. But so it's a little bit more unpredictable this year, but I think what is our average about 1.2 million more a month that we're bringing in, some of which is going to wage and salary, some of which will go back into filling gaps.
I guess my question is, do we, do we anticipate that when we revise 2024 that that 10% number of what's being used out of the County General Fund will be, will be?
No, I, and I will tell you too, just so the other nuance, I'm sorry, Lindsay, I cut you off, is we will be rebasing. So for 2024, so what that means is they look at all of our costs and you remember our costs have increased because we've hired more staff, we've elevated salaries, we've filled some gaps with some specialty programs. All of those costs will be reevaluated and we anticipate that our encounter rate will go up come January 1st next year.
All right, Joan. Thank you. So there are certain components of comcare that are paid for with general fund dollars. And I don't envision that dollar amount going down disproportionately as they grow and get more CCBHC funding and they're able to do more programs. Our expenses will go up a proportion. That 10% will probably change. But I would imagine the dollars will remain flat so that we continue to provide those same services that I think maybe some, some very small amount could be covered with charges for service, but not a lot would be
Yeah, and really eligible. And that's a good point because the, the And that's a good point because the the funding that's provided to us through the county is typically directed toward county initiatives. How so? How do we help county strategic initiatives? And a lot of that has gone to the Central County Offender Assessment Program, which was designed as a jail diversion program. Strategically, some of that funding goes to mobile crisis response and then you pay for some of our infrastructure and some of our administrative positions. So those those funds have usually been pretty specifically targeted as an enhancement to county need.
I I see a big drastic change, six point two million and and on a grant that we received in twenty three and not receiving in twenty four. Is that related to COVID? Is that?
That was our SAMPA grant. So that was our first grant to start planning to become a CCBHC. It was a two year grant. It expired. We got a second grant for a million dollars over four years. We're in, we'll be heading into our second. But again, that was to get us going. We anticipate that we will be able to support it through our.
That's that way. Thanks, Joan. Thank you for the presentation. This this might be a question for Lindsay or Tom. I don't know, but I'll see on the staff table, it talks about some health positions. Fifty point five. When did that when did that begin?
It started in, we 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 moved those out of the budget this year, but we held those positions when we did our CCBHC pay incentive increase because we didn't want to over ask for budget authority for those salary increases when we couldn't, we knew we wouldn't be filling all of those. We took a percentage of them and took them out of the mix.
So are they are they reflected in the chart below or not?
No.
Okay, so.
But you guys allow us to add those back in as we have need.
Okay, so for the seventy two positions that are shown vacant right now. Does this budget anticipate filling the seventy two positions? So the the budget includes funding from salary for those folks?
As long as they are not held, yes. If they're a held position, there's no budget authority assigned to those. Otherwise, if it's something that comcare anticipates that they could realistically fill, then yes, the dollars are there, but they're not spent unless the position is filled.
What was our peak? We had unemployment numbers for a large number of FTEs were were not in the department. What was our what was our peak?
We were down to fifty seven percent of our positions filled. So at that time we had it would be the it would be close to like five hundred and twenty six positions of which half of those were not filled.
Okay, that was that was the last your last two years or so. Okay, thank you.
Last year when we were talking about budgets, we looked at the new model and how we're going to pay people better and kind of significant increase for in increase for wages. We were a little worried about would the new model cover that? Is that going?
Yes.
I'm I'm assuming because it sounds like it's going well, but that's covering that.
Because the more people we have, the more people we can serve, which means our encounter rates go up. It's a it's a win win. You fill positions, you get people served and we get a payment.
I'm really happy to hear it because when I first started in our first budget took me around everywhere and really.
It was sad.
Fifty seven percent and and we were talking about all these things. Doing different things and your advice to me was we can't do anything with stabilize our workforce. So I'm really happy to see the changes we've made in the last couple of years have helped you do that.
Yeah.
Thank you for everything.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Brishers, I'll talk a little bit about the CDVO. In terms of workforce, it's a small workforce and there are a couple of vacancies, but they're working to continue to fill those. They received some additional funding from the state and so we've added some vacancies that we'd like to build. In terms of strategic goals, again, it's a small organization. It is also an organization that really fully embraced remote work at the beginning of pandemic. This this department responded very quickly and within a couple of weeks, they had the bulk of the work that they do is in the community. It's a field based function. They were able to quickly respond and deliver that service from the community. And we moved our workforce out and allowed them to work from home, freed up a bunch of space that the sheriff has taken advantage of in the Ark Valley Lodge. And so again, communication is critical. They do a lot of work regarding communication in a remote setting, which is different than office based communications. And then they focus on process improvements as well. They want to make sure again that small workforce is empowered to do the work that they need to do. And again, it takes leadership to make that happen. The department has really embraced Kansas Leadership Center, uh, leadership thought and continue to work with their staff on that in that regard. In terms of the five year horizon, there are some challenges and the biggest challenge is the community capacity to deliver services. I've talked many different times about the different models of service delivery that exist within the Division of Public Services. We've got direct service providers like comcare. We've got management that at the other end of the spectrum is a system that manages the system of care and community based providers. And the CDVO is the front door for access for services for developmental individuals experiencing in a developmental disability. But they don't deliver direct services. They manage a network of service providers in the community and to do that, they're obligated to make sure that services are available and managing that network of service providers is critical. If the community gets to a point where they cannot deliver services, it would become incumbent upon the CDVO to become a service provider. And we have twenty five year history of not being a service provider and we'd like to maintain that, but the community being able to hire folks is critical. Proud to say that one of those opportunities there about the TCM rate has been passed by the legislature. So we're they're going to see a significant service providers will see a significant increase in the rate that they'll be able to pay their employees because that rate has gone up. And then there's ongoing concern about the waitlist and state funds that waitlist and being able to get folks off the waitlist. Right now, if there was a huge infusion of money into the waitlist from the state, the network would not be able to provide services. So that's one of the challenges that we face. And then most important, I think, is the opportunity that we have coming up to integrate the CDVO function into a new Department of Aging and Disabilities. We're going to move the CDVO into the Department on Aging and Annette has a lot of experience working with disabled populations. She already serves the the physical disabilities population and her leadership at the state, I think, is well recognized and I'm really pleased that she's willing to accept this additional responsibility. It will increase her workforce by about fifty percent. So if there's anybody ready to take on that challenge, it's Annette. So from a number standpoint, again, it's pretty flat. Some reduction in commodities tied to some special projects that we don't anticipate happening in twenty twenty four. So happy to answer any questions about the CDVO.
Thank you, Tim. I I didn't see on some of the challenges. And I'm glad Joan's here. Dual diagnosis, those that are experiencing development and disability and also a mental health issue. This seems to be a pretty significant, very complex issue. I don't know the quantity of people that are experiencing dual diagnosis, but is there a have we had conversations about how we best address these individuals and service their needs?
I'll go first. And one of those pilots that I talked about that the Interhab has asked us to look at is around those services for the duly diagnosed. They're the recognition statewide. There is not a good network of provider and very, very complex patients. There's not a great network of providers in that regard. I don't know, Joan, you've got other comments.
And you might add also how we're handling that now, since there isn't a good network of providers, how they're being serviced now.
I will say that comcare has several designated employees for working with transitional issues with IDV issues and and a few others. The complication is many of them are nonverbal. So traditional services like talk therapy aren't very beneficial. They're substance, I mean, their IDD is the predominant issue and you know, we're providing outpatient services. So when they're in a facility or at home and they're engaged in self harm behavior, it's really hard to intervene. There is efforts statewide to create a process for IDD patients in crisis separate from the mental health crisis response because the needs differ. And I'm not sure how that's going to play out, but there is energy around this issue and I mean, we'll be at the table. We see a lot of them in crisis. We see a lot of them in our services, but a large percentage of these individuals emotionally and intellectually don't have the capacity to engage in traditional mental health services.
Very complex. Thank you. And I I think I know what Commissioner Dennis is going to ask. And if he doesn't ask it, then I'll then I'll have one more question.
Again, IDD is one of my top issues that I push further and make sure that keeps being included in our legislative agenda, although it doesn't happen when it gets up there. I I don't want to drop that again next. I want to make sure that it stays on our legislative agenda in the future because more and more people finally finding out that we're nine or 10 years to get someone services that need those services. So again, keep that as one of our legislative attend items. And Annette does a great job. I just kind of worry a little bit about overloading her because there's a little difference between aging population and the IDD population. I want to make sure that we are continue to support those group of people that have IDD issues. I I've been asking in the past of what's going to happen because we've had that opening at the top of of CDVO for a while. And I see that you do have a solution. I I just don't want to overload in that either.
Neither do I. And I would, i- in terms of legislative, I think the commission should take victory lap because that TCM rate increase was on our legislative agenda. And that really makes a difference in the community because that ten year waiting list means that there are lots of gaps in people's lives. TCM is transitional case management. That will help individuals that aren't yet off of the waiting list, but there may be other services. It helps connect families with providers and other types of services that they may be eligible for that aren't paid for once they get on the waiting list. So again, it's a it's a big win, I think, for the system and it's a, I think, one of the reasons it happened was because it was on our legislative agenda.
You have a question?
Okay, I'm gonna turn it over to Annette.
Good morning. So we'll start with our workforce issue and you can see that we do have a fair amount of red. And now these are all of the positions we have on the table, some of which we do not have posted because since COVID, March of twenty twenty, we've been experienced at least an eighty percent turnover in staff. We've had time where we've had programs that have been running at ten percent of staffing capacity. We have our transportation program that's in red that has never ever been totally filled. And a big part of that issue is pay. We're hopeful that that can get addressed, but we are the lowest paid transportation drivers in the region. And it is very hard to both get and keep drivers and that's a very big issue. We have had, like I said, that eighty percent turnover has been very significant on the impact of our operations. Because what you know is what happens when you have that staff turnover, the people that remain, the survivors have to take on a whole lot of work. And that has really stretched our capacity to do a lot of things because we've had people at the unit director level having to manage the programs down to almost the the field level. So they've had to do the oversight. They've had to do making sure that the services get provided. They've actually had to help provide the services. So over the last three years, it has been a real challenge to continue at the same level. We've not been able to do at the same level. We've had our challenges and we've had our issues. And we've had programs, like I said, that had a hundred percent turnover. We've had a hundred percent turnover in our finance. And our finance is very complicated because we have so many different grants. We have five different fiscal years. We're working with lots of different funders and then you have to translate that from grant years and fiscal years into the county's twelve month cycle. And that's not an easy transition. So anybody coming in, we've had our Michelle Strut, someone took her within the county. So once she left, then we had another director, that director of finance left because of family reasons. And then we had another one. So this has just been a pretty tumultuous time trying to deal with that. Luckily, I have a couple of high level staff that have been there very, very long time. We have a lot of longevity and that really does help and that will help as we move to transition and integrate the CDVO in because I have this long term staff that are really, really good at those at that high level. So that's kind of where we are. We're you know, we think we're kind of coming out of the woods, but it has been a long haul and just last last year, at the end of last year and the first of this year, we had our direct case management staff. Those do federally and state funded direct case management services with individuals in the community. We were functioning with only one case manager out of four positions and a program manager that was also vacant. So that just kind of gives you a sight of of things we've been dealing with. So for our strategic plan, this is the last year of our strategic plan. So much like the counties, we got it implemented and then COVID hit. So we continue to focus on that, but we will need to begin to work on at the next round of that. And when we did this, we did have a lot of community input from across the the three county region we serve and especially heavily in Sedgwick County. So the first one is a comprehensive coordinated system of care. And that really is to work at the community level to make sure at the community level and even at the state level that there's a system of care for older adults that are community based that really meets the needs of individuals, caregivers and individuals with disabilities. Like Tim said, we also work with people with physical disabilities to make sure the number one thing that people really need to start with is information and resources. They need to know where to go. They need to know what's available. And that's a really, really hard ticket to fill because people know usually a couple of things. They know nursing homes, they know Mills on Wheels. But a lot of the in between, they don't know. So this is one that we've really worked really hard at and we do it at the state level and at the local level. Tim mentioned the award we just got, received notification for two days ago. And that is an achievement award from the National Association US Aging. And that is for our work around COVID, our work in collaboration with community providers, the Health Department, the State Union on Aging, community providers, pharmacies, other entities to go in and provide in home vaccination, to provide information and assistance on COVID, to help work with the nursing facilities and assisted living, to help educate people to get testing kits out there. So we, that is what we got. But that really is about a comprehensive coordinated system of care. We worked with the state legislature this year with our state association and we're successful getting three million dollars statewide for nutrition, which is a big, a a big issue. And so we also do a lot of work at the state level around advocacy and at the national level around advocacy. And with this comprehensive coordinated system of care, it's a lot of collaboration, work with community providers, work with WSU, work with Alzheimer's Association, uh, community providers, in home service providers. We do a monthly aging network meeting where we get about eighty different providers that come in and network people. The second goal is housing. So housing is critical for people to remain in their homes and in their communities and out of nursing facilities or higher level of care. Accessible housing is an issue for all of us. If you live long enough and you want to stay in your home, your home might not be accessible. You might not be able to get in and out if there's stairs. You might not be able to go through doors with a wheelchair. You might need grab bars. So these are really important things. The other thing we're seeing more is the impact of inflation. The other thing we're seeing more is the impact of inflation on older adults and everybody's ability to live in the community. So what we're seeing at the national level and even at the local is what they call the graying of homelessness. More and more people at 55 and older are becoming homeless. They can't keep up with their property taxes. Like the rent's going up. They can't afford the rent. Something happens and they have some kind of catastrophic illness and now they don't have the funds to pay for that. So once they lose housing, that is really, really often can end up in homelessness because they just can't access that. Um, so there's a lot of issues around housing. Transportation is an issue that crosses all populations, all economics. And I know that you all are very aware about the transportation needs. But as people uh outlive their ability to drive, this becomes a big issue. Um, transportation for the rural areas and the rural areas of the county and people that are mobility impaired is really a big issue. So we have worked a lot and continue to work about increasing the coordination for transportation services. There's a lot of transportation providers, um both in the rural and in 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 the local area, but trying to coordinate that better and trying to coordinate with individuals and programs that are outside of the Sedgwick County because they're all coming in here for treatment. They come in for healthcare, they come in for hospitalization and trying Kansas Department of Transportation, who is a big funder of transportation, really wants to uh reduce the overlap of multiple K dot funded buses coming in, vans coming in, so working to increase that. So during COVID, we were able to get funding and worked with K dot and our coordinated tracks of district that serves seven counties to get a mobility manager. So that person is doing a lot of work at the regional level, the seven county, at the state level and at the local level and working a lot right now with Brampo to really look at um the needs of coordinated transportation. Um, this one is kind of, it sounds weird, addressing the perception of aging and wellness. It's really important that people in the community understand aging, both us as we all age, but other people also have to understand that the issues of aging. And we really need to get to a place where we're looking at older adults as valuable and not vulnerable. 10,000 people a day across the nation are turning 65. Most of people when they turn 65 anymore are keeping working or they're going to volunteer. They've got a lot of life ahead of them. How do we make that productive? And how do we help them keep giving that into community? We've got to address the issue of ageism. That is a big issue that came out in our strategic plan. And we are doing a lot of work around that and probably in the next several months, you'll begin to see some action. I mean, I have some marketing campaigns around ageism. Uh, so we're kind of excited about that. Uh, but it really is, um, we have to do this through education and enhanced awareness so that people, as I said, see it as valuable and not vulnerable. Um, and that goes, you know, both for the how people see themselves, but how we see others. And then the final strategic goal is chronic illness, mental health and aging. Uh, there was just a story yesterday on TV and it's like, oh, there's a, there's an intersection between mental health, depression and heart disease. Well, yeah, surprising research, uh, but mental health and physical health are all one connected thing. And we really have to be able to help the community and help providers understand that intersection. You've got to address mental health, you got to address physical health and it's all interacts. Uh, so we're looking at how to make healthcare services that improve the quality of life. And how do we do that? We've got to look at health span, brain span and longevity. So there's a lot of work to go on to really bring these two together, but to work with providers and make those services better suited for those that that we uh that are out there. So our challenges and opportunities. So during COVID, since March of 2020, we have received four, five different allocations of funding related to COVID. These are federal dollars that have came down through the State Unit on Aging to the area agencies on aging in Kansas. Uh, the last one was the ARPA Older Americans Act dollars. That funding is available through September of 2024. At that time, then there's a sharp drop off in money and funding. And that is going to be a challenge in how we address that and how we move forward. At the same time that we see a continual growth in the population age 60 and older. And during COVID, what we saw is more people were coming and seeking services. Those people aren't going to quit coming. They're still going to come. Uh, we've also seen that the people that are presenting for services have a lot more complex needs. They're waiting to access services and they have uh a different array of needs. Um, at the same time, the increased cost of doing business keeps going up, whereas a lot of times the funding does it. So that's how do you be more efficient and more effective? And how do you really target the service you're doing to meet those needs? So some opportunities for change and innovation. With this new money, what we've been able to do is do some piloting and do some new kind of services. Kind of like we did with the $500,000 that the Board of County Commission authorized for 2022. So what we were able to do is try some new services. What are the needs? Does this have a bigger impact that what we're do- what we're doing now? Uh, is there a different way of doing business? Do people need different services? So these are all opportunities as we kind of go through and finish out this funding and try different things on and pilot different things. And we've really been able to identify and address the changing needs of the population. As I said, it's different now. We've all changed in the last three years and so have the needs and the way that people want to access services and will. So many people found it quite fascinating that older adults could use technology. Uh, they can use technology and they were using telehealth and they were doing things a lot differently. Uh, so we've been able to kind of capitalize on that and really be very innovative. And we will continue to do that as we're utilizing technology to address social isolation, which is, has impacted everybody, but we're also modernizing services. And so we're, we're changing how we're doing things, we're testing it out and we hope that we'll be able to come with some different models. As I mentioned at a recent um presentation for the leadership team that we're looking at some uh data system, a data system for all of our nutrition providers. We have five nutrition providers. And when we brought them together, we found out that they don't have a, a data system. A lot of them are using papers and manual and paper and mail. So uh we're really excited to uh to to move forward with this, to implement this. That would be something that for many, many years to come would really improve the service delivery. And um one of the providers that we had a meeting with this week said, when they've used this data system, they've seen a 40% reduction in staff time. So we're pretty excited about those opportunities uh moving forward. And so here's our budget and you'll see some, some, some change with that. Um, and that's primarily the loss of those funding and as we're coming down to the end of uh a lot of those COVID funding. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
When you said that our aging population is to be seen as valuable, not just vulnerable, I think that's a profound statement. And I appreciate your leadership. Congratulations to your department and your team on the uh achievement award. I think that's fantastic. You, you talked about uh transportation and one of the biggest bottlenecks in that is the rate of pay. Uh, can you tell me a little bit, what is our rate of pay for that? And do you have a market comp? Or anything to to demonstrate how we are falling behind? Is anybody?
I think our start pay is $12.08 an hour. And our mobility manager that works in this region had done some work and pulled together some information and we were pretty significantly below any, any others in the area. Um, even like, you know, the Lord Steiner that delivers meals and not people and doesn't have to be uh worrying about making sure people in wheelchairs are safely secured. I think they were getting $17 an hour.
That's dramatic. Is this addressing Evergreen? Yes, okay. Very helpful, thank you.
Some under $15 an hour positions there too that we're bringing up to 15.
Under 10. Okay, hopefully, hope it's on the way, hopefully. Thank you. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners and Board of Health. Adrian Burn, Health Director. Hey, so during, you can imagine during COVID, uh between March of 2020 through the end of last year, we had a significant amount of uh turnover. Um, and that's definitely been a uh theme uh in our, our division. We are making progress with filling some of the positions. The ones that we're really continuing to struggle with primarily because of salary are the medical positions, our nurse positions, uh dieticians, our mid levels as far as the nurse practitioners and physicians assistants. And the WIC program, we typically have three sites, our main one at East Ninth and then uh Clifton and Stanley. And we lost enough nurses and dieticians that we last year ended up needing to close our Stanley location. And we have not been able to fill any of those positions since that time. And so we're working with temporary services, bringing in uh staff to be able to try to keep up. Uh, but we are uh behind in processing because we don't have enough. Uh, our providers are the ones that move those um families through. Um, so it is taking longer to get people in and we are losing some in that process. But we, you know, we have those positions posted and um are hoping that we are able to start filling some of those, but we don't have any applicants currently. At West Central, we have a lot of nursing positions and they can be open for a year sometimes. But we have filled all but I believe two. So we, we have added one to the general clinic. And so that would be in yellow. But that is definitely our struggle is, is the medical staff. Our strategic plan, we created this uh at the end of 2019 and had a lot of staff involvement from all levels of the Health Department. And like everybody else's, COVID hit and it was put on the, the back burner. But all of them uh still apply and are even more important uh in some ways than what, what they even were before. So our first one is to strengthen a skilled and innovative workforce. COVID was for two and a half so years was very different. And so we, we hired over 63% of staff since 2020 have been new. And so they really are slowly learning what things were before. And so we're, we're going to a, a new and hopefully improved uh normal because of things that we've learned along the way. Uh, but definitely looking at and providing developmental, uh development for in-person skills. Um, providing technical training. Uh, our goal two, promote and sustain a positive work culture, working with H R on this with uh redoing all of our uh all of our job descriptions, which is quite a, a process, but really looking at how to word those to attract uh people. And we have staff in every position involved in that process. And so that has been, been very positive. Improve communication and collaboration. And this is within the Health Department with improving bidirectional internal communication and also with the uh county departments that we're working with. Established communication and collaboration improved between programs and maximize partnerships. So it's all about really uh communication internally and externally with uh looking at improved strategic communication with and between our partners. And we definitely established new relationships with partners during COVID, some that we hadn't worked with before. And then modernizing the community communication. There's a lot of data that our partners have and there's really not an efficient way to bring that in. So we're beginning to work with I T on that. So our challenges, again, uh our focus was highly on COVID. And uh even when we began providing some of the functions that we had before, they were different. And so uh staff are, it's just been uh a really interesting year as staff are asking, what, what is our culture? Because during COVID, it was very different um in regards to the availability of mentoring and supervisors that had experience to work with and, and guide people. And our processes were different and we were uh getting into, we, we didn't have processes for a lot of, of what we were doing at that time. Uh, so we are adding new and revising current processes and continuing engagement of partners in the community. Ongoing funding for public uh health infrastructure during pandemics like uh H1N1. Infusion of money comes in for public health infrastructure to be able to deal with uh what's in front of us going on in the community, uh because public health is uh historically underfunded. And so this uh federal money comes in, the state money comes in and then it slowly uh it slowly uh ends. And then we can be in a similar position to what, what we were prior to. So this year has been a busy year in the legislature in regards to public health. And uh a positive is um that and I, I was involved with sending letters in support of state formula funding and our uh we have a state local health department association called, called Kansas Association of Local Health Departments. And the president was very involved in lobbying for increased money. And so we will be receiving about $800,000 for uh this next state year, which is July 1st through the end of June. And some of that will help us uh pay for others that were funded under, you know, with that because of, of salary increases. And then we're looking at, you know, what, what do we, how is the best way to strategically uh use that uh money for the betterment of our community? Staffing shortages, I, I mentioned the dieticians uh and nurses have continued to be quite a struggle, uh particularly at West Central or, or um WIC location. Uh, opportunities, uh there, there were positives with uh COVID. And uh two of them, we, we every three years do do a community health uh assessment, which is called a CHA. And then out of that comes the Community Health Improvement Plan, known as the CHIP. And we had many partners involved in this. And the issues that rose to the top were four. And it's food access, healthcare access, mental health and education. And healthcare access continues to be a theme uh in our community and has been uh for decades. Uh, and we have four, so we have four groups uh meeting monthly. And our mental health group is really robust. There's about 30 people representing about 20 different partners that are part of that uh mental health group. And then our uh COVID-19 community recovery partner meetings, we started in 2022. And this is some of the ARPA funding is allowing us to, to do this because we, we definitely uh became aware of the need for improved uh partnerships and communication during COVID because the Health Department can't do all the, the communication. It really is important for uh, you know, law enforcement and, and everybody to be involved in helping communicate to the community what's going on. And uh so there are seven main work groups uh that have, that uh have been involved. And uh you'll see there it's businesses, uh coalitions and health focused community groups, congregate settings, educational organizations, government agencies and departments, hospitals and medical clinics. And those are meeting monthly uh to really look at, how can we? Uh, we started last year looking at what were the areas during COVID that needed improvement with the Health Department? Uh, what were some positives? Uh, and how can we help you as organizations be better prepared for the next pandemic? And how can we better work together? And so the, at, at, at the end of this, we will have some sort of a uh, group that meets even twice a year to, in case there are uh, new people in the positions and then maybe it's once a year, but maintaining those relationships and the dialogue so that when the next one comes, there will be another one at some point that those are in place versus trying to build uh, as we go, which during a pandemic is a very hard thing to do because of how, how chaotic things are. Our, our budget, you'll see for uh, twenty twenty-four, it's uh, approximately three million dollars less than twenty twenty-three. And that is largely uh, due to one of our uh, state grants ending in, in twenty twenty-three. We still have uh, grant funding through the state as well as ARPA through twenty twenty-four. But the state uh, grant that's ending is primarily that difference. Then happy to answer any questions.
Questions.
Thank you. It's nice to have a discussion about this instead of uh, when we were seeing you weekly.
I know.
So, but thanks for all the work that you and your staff have done through that crisis. Thank you.
Okay, commissioners to bring this to a close. Eighty-seven million dollar ask for the division total fund request there. Again, the bulk of that is going to be other funding sources, um, revenue, state funds, state contracts, that sort of thing. There is one decision package, child advocacy center. The departments were committed to holding back on decision package requests because they continue to believe we need to have an emphasis on compensation. You saw a number of reds and yellows on their workforce strength. So any kind of commitment that we can do to continue enhance our compensation package is really important to the departments and service to agree.
Just a, yes, quick. Go ahead. I just have a quick uh, observation and I guess I'd like to have staff clarify or verify my, my observation here. If you go back to twenty-one and twenty-two, you'll see those numbers significantly smaller, um, many of these budgets. And I think in twenty twenty-three, we're seeing a lot of ARPA infusion and probably I assume, I don't know, temporary monies that Jack, no, Jack, those numbers way up. I know we have salary increases as well, but this, that last slide that shows a huge reduction. If you compare the, the, the final number that's requested in twenty-four to what we had in twenty-one, twenty-two, still significantly larger. So I mean, we get, we might get the wrong idea just looking at the one year that we're have a very, very fiscally conservative and we do it, by the way, we do, not saying it's not. But you see that huge reduction in, in that number by itself and you get the idea that we're somehow cutting what we're doing. I don't think we're cutting what we're doing. What we're, what we're seeing is a difference in, in funding sources that have changed in the last couple of years. And so it's still, it's still up over twenty-one, twenty-two primarily because of salary increases. I'd like to just have a, a better understanding exactly what that final number represents in terms of it's, it's a salary increase, not a reduction in services, what we're doing here.
Well, I think so the ARPA funds that the county received, the one hundred point two million is actually shown in finances budget. So that is not depicted in any of the slides that you saw here, that one hundred point three nine. But that said, it doesn't mean that all of these departments, uh, maybe not Comter. But uh, at least these two aging and health department didn't receive their own allocations from ARPA under separate buckets. And so, and there are different grants. SAMSA was one that Joan mentioned where it's not necessarily tied to COVID. So there are fluctuations in the amount of grant funding coming into the organization. I also will point out that as Annette alluded to earlier, we have very different fiscal years. We are doing a twelve-month budget. They live on grants that are on federal, state terms, other terms. And so that's why you'll see a variation if you look in the budget books between the adopted budget and the revised budget. Because with our grants, we're able to come to you and say, we need more budget authority in order to, to receive this grant and spend this grant funding. And so you're right, I think this is always a trend too, between the revised of one year and a, uh, the next year's budget is we're not, we don't know that grants are coming. And so this time next year, twenty twenty-four can look very different and probably will look very different. We don't have any of the twenty twenty-four compensation adjustments built in yet. None of the capital improvement projects, none of those things are built in. So you could see a very different twenty twenty-four budget, even in the recommended versus what you see today. If that.
I guess, I guess, because the numbers by itself looks like, okay, twenty-three revised was over a hundred million and twenty-four requested, the, the, again, the, the summary of these five departments, eighty-seven point nine. You know, someone might get the wrong idea. What does that mean? It means we're slashing government, reducing, you know, laying off employees or reducing services. I don't think that's what it means. But it takes an explanation to know that. And the, the explanation is, is needed. And again, if you go back even a few years, you'll see those salary increases uh, especially from twenty-one to twenty-two to what the twenty-three, twenty-four show, again, it'll also be even more in twenty-four, actually, for what we've seen in this, these presentations.
Well, and remember twenty twenty-two had a twenty-seventh pay period also, which is dramatic. I mean, we know that's nine million dollars every time we do one payroll. So that's going to throw off your budget question too.
All right, thank you, thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. About a, about a ten minute break. Okay. How you can feel the seers. We're used to it. Okay.
For our last presentation, we have the technology review board and Mike Elpers will be presenting. And we do have a new packet that was handed out together, a couple of changes. So the full packet is here for you.
Okay, so we can replace these pages?
Yes.
Lot of things changed in this presentation, last twenty-four hours. Special thanks to Carly for putting up with all that. Good morning, commissioners. Mike Elpers with Central County IT. Good morning, Mike. Today I will be presenting the Technology Review Board's twenty twenty-four budget request. A little background in history first, the Technology Review Board, or TRB, was established in twenty nineteen as a way to review the acquisition and maintenance of technologies throughout the county. We assist, we assist departments to review, approve, prioritize and frequently fund technologies being considered by all divisions, departments and programs throughout the organization. TRB is just extremely valuable for IT. The TRB process gets IT involved early on when things can still be changed or different implementation options can be explored. And when the inevitable timeline crunch for go-live is not critical. TRB consists of seven voting members, most from the leadership team. But we include several others in the meetings to make sure we consider all aspects of budget planning and some additional IT folks to help manage larger project implementations and plan ongoing support needs. So this is the list of A-rated projects TRB approved for twenty twenty-four, which require additional funding to complete. The list is prioritized in TRB order and I'll present them in this order. Some of these are new technologies being implemented, while others are simple hardware refreshes or larger upgrades to existing solutions. My plan is to talk through each of these and give you some basic kind of high-level information about them as well as the costs. But if there are questions about any of them along the way, feel free to stop me and ask me at any time. Representatives from the departments on this list are in attendance, so hopefully we'll have the answers to your questions. We're running a little bit early and I don't see representatives from district attorney's office, but Greg is all over that project and can fill you in on any details, should be able to fill you in on any details you have there. So let's get started with project number one, the internet routers for IT infrastructure. So the internet routers are the two traffic cops that sit on the edge of our network um, and direct requests to and from the internet. They use a paired protocol called BGP or border gateway protocol. So that should anything break on one of the routers or power go out in one of the buildings, the other can take over without any downtime or outage. We also contract with two different internet service providers or ISPs. So that if one provider is down, uh, the other will still provide us the internet connection we need to conduct business. This is one of three projects this year that could best be described as a hardware refresh. The end of life for this hardware is scheduled for July thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. The hardware needs to be ordered though in twenty twenty-four as supply chain issues for these estimate between twelve and fourteen months. And we don't want these critical systems to fall off support. Each router is about thirty thousand dollars, so the total cost of the project is estimated to be sixty thousand. There is ongoing maintenance for these in years after twenty twenty-four, but it will be covered with the budget used to pay the annual maintenance for the current internet routers. So this is really considered just a one-time budget request. Okay, the second project is for a new case management solution for the district attorney's office. This new solution has been planned for several years as the current solution they use for case management called Justware actually went end of support back in July of twenty twenty-one. Before it did though, we were able to put a contract in place with a third party to keep support in place for three additional years. So the RFP for the new solution is underway involving not only the district attorney's office, but also the county councilor's office, county court and corrections pre-trial. They're estimating a nine hundred thousand dollar budget for implementation, then an ongoing annual support agreement in the seven hundred and seventy thousand dollar range. These amounts are definitely on the high end. So once the RFP process completes, we'll have a much better idea of what this is actually going to cost.
Mike, is there an offset from whatever they're using now that will reduce the cost?
Yes, they currently pay.
What, what's the total cost of implementation after you subtract out what we're eliminating?
One thirty-five a year, is that what it is, Greg? One thirty, one thirty? So subtract a hundred and thirty off of each of those totals.
So is it more robust system or what makes it worth like more than a hundred and thirty dollars?
Good morning, commissioners, Greg Gann, Business Solutions Group Director. The solution we're seeking for the DA, county court and corrections is a very robust and modern solution that addresses a number of the shortfalls of, of Justware. There's a number of uh, workarounds that we created over the years to, to make it more robust and more automated. The new system gives uh, an increased capacity to the district attorney's office, allowing them to, again, automate processes and have better control of the data.
So if they can automate these, is there a reduction in personnel costs then?
There's increased efficiencies. Uh, they'll be able to put people in place to do higher level work that was more um, um, worker bee type.
Good, thank you.
All right. Mike, just to clarify and maybe Greg too, on that number two, that's the one that we're going to integrate now, and then we're gonna, we're gonna integrate Justware now with Odyssey. Integrate a second time with Odyssey when this goes live.
Correct.
That'll be fun.
That's the plan to work in front of BSG right now. Okay, so project number three is the second of three hardware refresh projects this year, and it's to replace six posts or six physical servers that run our hypervisor solution or the solution that we use for server virtualization. Uh, our entire virtualization landscape is made up of thirty-two hosts with each host running between fourteen and forty-three virtual servers on it. So replacing these six equates to about a hundred and twenty, hundred and thirty virtual servers or about twenty-six percent of the overall total of, of, of virtual servers. Most physical servers such as these have a seven-year lifespan, at least that's as long as the hardware vendor, vendor will keep them under warranty. After this year, IT infrastructure is planning to replace three physical hosts a year. So this will likely come back to you next year, but with a smaller price tag. Project number four is the last hardware refresh type of project that we have, and it deals with data storage or what we call SAN, a SAN, a storage area network. This project is to take one of our existing SANS, which goes end of life in twenty twenty-four and basically replace the parts that are expiring, kind of like dropping a new engine in an old car, right? And it's still pretty expensive to do so, but it's less expensive than buying a new car. We'll replace the controllers or what they call the brains of the SAN and add additional storage to increase the storage capacity, which should support an estimated five years of data growth and allow for vendor support for an additional five years. Of course, this SAN stores a lot, uh, stores data from a lot of different departmental systems like those listed here. Also, just normal file servers like your U drive. Cost for this expanded expansion is three hundred and twenty-one thousand and forty-eight dollars, which is a one-time expense. Okay, we'll move away from the hardware refresh ones because those are kind of boring stories to tell and get you to some uh, some business functionality.
Question, so this, this storage that we're talking about, this is data storage. Have we, we've looked at going to cloud-based storage?
We have. Next year, you will see and it's, we're planning uh, a TRB project for twenty twenty-five to move this organization to Office three sixty-five. And when we do that, that's a cloud-based office solution and comes with Joe, OneDrive? Yes, comes with Microsoft OneDrive, a terabyte of storage uh, that is cloud.
But this is a lot of storage.
I'll let a lot more. We have, so let's see, we have a total capacity, I've got total capacities here, but I don't have uh, the storage of this specific SAN that we're replacing. We have total capacity of four hundred and ninety-six uh, four hundred and ninety-seven terabytes with about three hundred terabytes in use and about two hundred free.
In my uh, investigation under the uh, no ink uh, pole pad issue, I was told, actually, I've, I've had a report from this, NCSL talks about many of the states have moved to government cloud. Does Kansas or Central County have a government-based cloud that we can use if we choose to do so?
Joe, I'm gonna ask you to come up and address that. I know um, the license that we sign with uh, Microsoft and several other cloud vendors. Because we are government, it requires us to write into the contract that it has to be on US soil. Not necessarily that it has to be in Kansas.
Either side. Sure.
Good morning, commissioners. Joe Courier, IT Infrastructure Director. The storage that we're asking for here, a lot of that is used to actually run the servers that we have on premise. So if your, if your system boots up, the, this, your, your computer has a, a C drive, hard drive. A, a lot of that storage is that specifically for our servers that we run between domain controllers, your minimum tax systems uh, and your SAP systems and such. Thanks. And that, that list there is at the bottom of this slide.
Okay, I guess I, I, I think I understand what you're doing here. I just wonder if the evolution of computing structure, this is something we'll be doing forever at this, in this wire system that's transitioning to to the cloud-based technology.
So we'll move more and more to the cloud as these systems do evolve to that. Each one, say uh, like, like our case management system that we use within IT, our heat system. We're looking to move that to a cloud-based solution next year, or I'm sorry, this year. That will be from an on-premise storage to then move into the cloud. Databases will live in the cloud. Pardon me. And so as these different systems do transition, we'll see that happen. But at this point, a lot of these systems are on premise and that's choices made either by regulation or by the departments themselves that need it.
So to my, to my, to my question, I mean, there is a government-based cloud that's uh, sounds like some, you know, some states have state-based government clouds for their states. You know, smaller units of government use, okay? I don't know if Kansas even has that right now, but it'd be nice to know what the status is at the, at the state level. And uh, if that, if that becomes available and you talk about it's a contract, it sends up, we'll be looking at that rather than potentially investing, you know, this type of money here. I don't know, this is maybe this isn't the right year, but it seems like that's where we're headed. So why not at least be discussing that while we're talking about this money? All right, thanks.
Excellent. There is definitely a transition to cloud computing. It's a slow transition as, as systems get refreshed, like the next slide here, you'll see the It's a slow transition as, as systems get refreshed, like the next slide here, you'll see the, well, this isn't the camera or Ryan. But the DA's system, for example, not that that one has been picked yet, but there, I'm sure there are cloud options there. But a lot of those, the SAP financial system that we're going to next year. You know, you move to those, but the, the old systems, you don't want to just power off on day one. So that data, when you want to keep around for a while, we went to a cloud HR system back in twenty twenty. We've still got that data on premise, right, to look up historical data and that type of thing. You're, you're right, it definitely is moving to a cloud computing environment, but it's a slow transition.
Okay.
Okay, so project number five is from the Appraiser's Office, and it's the addition of two new software modules to their existing Orion appraisal property management system by Tyler Technologies. These two modules were designed specifically to work with Orion, which will allow for all valuation work to be completed in one application. These two new modules, personal property and oil and gas, will bring much more efficiency and accuracy, accuracy to the appraiser for maintaining over thirty-six thousand personal property accounts and over thirteen hundred oil and gas accounts. Today, both of these areas are maintained in a very manual and inefficient processes, which also have very tight windows for some completion, especially oil and gas, which is performed over the course of two weeks. To really understand how complex these processes are and how susceptible they are to human error, I'd have to bring the praiser in to fully explain. But I can tell you, though, this project has been presented to TRB for the last three years. And it's only after bringing in staff to fully explain the processes and show how the manual lookups required to complete these processes, did TRB award an A rating to the project. The project cost is four hundred and twenty-five thousand for implementation and thirty-five thousand dollars in years twenty twenty-five and out. Any questions there, Commissioner Dennis?
Actually, I have a question for the praiser. As we look at oil and gas wells that we've got all throughout the county and we've got. Once they stop producing, and they say, hey, we're not drawing any additional income from that well. Do you, is there any way of reporting that then to environmental folks? Because to make sure that we plug those wells, because there are laws that require those wells to be plugged. So I'm trying to figure out how the environmental ever finds out that there's a well that stopped producing so that we can protect the environment.
Uh, yes, Commissioner, Ronald Tidwell, Chief Deputy Praiser. For a operator to plug a well, he has to get a permit to plug from the Kansas Environmental, Kansas Department of Health and Environment, and he's also got to get a permit from the Geological Society. Is, and that's the only way they can plug it. So KDHE is aware of it because they have to approve the permitting process to plug any oil well or gas well in the state.
Well, I understand the problem is that a lot of them don't want to go to the time and expense of plugging this well, so they just abandon them. And now we've got an issue out here in the county of abandoned wells. So I didn't know if your process could report it to the state so that they could force them to plug those wells.
Well, actually, the information we get comes from the State Geological Society that says they've claimed that they've extracted this much oil from the well during this month, this much oil this month, this, I mean, we get it on a monthly basis, and then we have to annualize it. And there are years when this well may not operate, and it may sit dormant for two or three years because the price of oil is not there. But here in the last six, seven months, almost every one of our wells that we have reported, the Geological Society just sent us a map and a data set about a month ago that is claiming we've got a lot more oils, wells, and gas, and we actually have a gas well that we were not even made aware of. So we've got some discovery work to do this summer.
But it really has nothing to do with TRB. I think that, but that's okay. Talking about tracking them with some kind of a database, I wanted to see if we could use that database.
But we understand what you're, what the situation is you're describing. We know it's there, but it's not in our process. But I do agree, something needs to be done about it.
Well, we'll pass the manager to work with our environmental folks to put a solution there.
Yeah, thank you.
So from the Appraiser's Office to our GIS department. So this next project from GIS is a request for professional consulting hours to assist with completing a transition of data sets from a current Sidwell platform to an updated Esri platform. The Sidwell platform is slated to go end of life in twenty twenty-six, but there's some benefit to doing this sooner rather than later, both in terms of the maintenance of these data sets and the, and the annual cost of that Sidwell platform. Initially, GIS was proposing to hire a third party to perform the transition, but they've changed their approach and to getting some training and performing the transition themselves. Getting these blocks of hours will allow for direct access to senior staff with Esri professional services to assist with troubleshooting and questions that come up during the migration. One block is equal to twenty hours, and there are six thousand dollars per block. So GI estimates about twenty thousand dollars or three blocks of overall expense associated with this effort. The extra two thousand, I know you can do the math, so the extra two thousand there is to cover any increase in their pricing over the next year. Once we're off of the Sidwell platform, an annual maintenance cost of five thousand dollars per year will be eliminated. Okay, back to the Appraiser's Office now. Project seven is from the Appraiser's Office and has to do with a twenty twenty-two project called Tyler Field Mobile. So while implementing Tyler Field Mobile in late twenty-two, it was discovered that a current version five of a dependent software called Apex Sketch had to be upgraded to version seven in order to get the full functionality out of Tyler Field Mobile. Appraiser's Office performed that upgrade and worked with the Budget Office to cover the additional expense in twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three, but brought this to TRB to request permanent budget authority for this solution, which is fifteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars annually. Now, six thousand, six hundred was already budgeted for the annual renewal of version five, so the annual increase to the budget would be nine thousand, one hundred and fifty. The software functionality is just what it sounds like. Appraiser staff use this software while out in the field to sketch out property lines and other aspects of properties being appraised, then bring those sketches back to the office, finalize them, and load them into Orion. Okay. Project number eight is the second project presented on behalf of GIS and is for a type of aerial, aerial imagery GIS likes to update every three years. This imagery is used in mapping products, web mapping applications, and other county enterprise systems, including nine-one-one and some other areas of public safety. GIS likes to update these images every three years, but the last time they were purchased and updated was in twenty seventeen. Came back in twenty twenty to update them, COVID put an extra hold on spending, and we've not purchased them since. Instead, twenty eighteen, in twenty eighteen, GIS used some imaging supplied by the state. So the state's next generation nine-one-one program collects these same aerial images, but with a one-foot resolution every three years. They did so in twenty eighteen, and they did so in twenty twenty-one. And this imagery supplied by the state is available to us in all counties, cities, et cetera, at no cost. We've been using it on our website, but because it's owned by the state, we're not allowed to distribute it to other local business partners or developers, so no downloads. If you go to our GIS site and try to download images, it's all twenty seventeen and, and earlier. So GIS would like to begin purchasing, purchasing this again, using a buy-up option to get the images at a six-inch resolution instead of the foot for eighty-one thousand dollars, which is a one-time expense, but will likely come back in twenty twenty-seven, as GIS would like to go back to their three-year update cycle. GIS showed the difference between a one-foot resolution and a six-inch resolution in their presentation to TRB, and the difference is pretty substantial. And again, if we don't purchase and just continue the state's one-foot resolution images, we cannot allow downloads to, of the images to occur, which are pretty substantial in number. Historically, averaging just over forty-three hundred downloads per year over the past five years. Something that came up out of the manager budget hearings was, do we have the ability to charge for those downloads? And Jack did some, Jack Joseph with our GIS department did some research, found some examples of other counties who do that. So we're looking into that. Greg and his development team are looking into what it would take to supply that functionality to our website.
Mike, quick question. What's the difference between this aerial imagery and the aerial imagery we do for our Appraiser's Office, and can they be interchanged?
Right, oblique, oblique versus ortho-rectified. And I'm not going to even pretend to know all the specifics of the difference, so I'm going to turn you over to Jack.
Good morning, Jack Joseph, GIS Director. So the difference between the ortho-rectified aerial imagery that we are requesting here this morning, that is a little more spatially accurate, it is taken from kind of straight up and down from the airplane. The oblique imagery that the appraisers use for appraisals is at a forty-five degree angle. It's not necessarily as spatially accurate, so when we stack that imagery on with our other layers, property, city boundaries, all this other stuff that's a little more spatially accurate, doesn't line up, and it also doesn't work well with using as a base map in that background because it's at an angle at all these different, different degrees, so.
Pretty much like it.
Yeah.
And, and we can't use Google Earth?
Um, I've not looked into Google Earth. I think the best alternative is the state program imagery.
But Google Earth is pretty good.
Yeah, yeah, I, I don't know.
Everyone look at.
I, I've not looked into using their imagery in our own mapping services. I don't know if there's licensing involved there or some sort of contract. I can definitely look into it, though.
Commissioner Dennis, let pack with Public Works. We use the images in Public Works daily. We also use Google Earth as well. The one thing we learned, we've sat on the RFP proposal team several times over the years when we've gone through these, and the one thing we've learned is Google Earth obtains, or at least traditionally has obtained their images from a variety of resources throughout the United States, throughout the world, and they piggyback contracts and, and very well. I mean, sometimes they get it free, sometimes they pay for it, piggybacking contracts, but they get it from USD, USDA, USGS, they get it from NASA. And if you'll notice, as you go through different years, the quality of those images vary greatly based on where they obtained the data, whether it was six inch, one foot. Actually, I've never seen them be a six inch, but one foot, five foot. So there's no qual, basically, there's no quality control by using Google. We, we use Google sometimes to get a more updated image because we only get them every three to five years. And sometimes it works out well because they've gotten a good flight in our area that we can use that information. But a lot of times, it's just the resolution isn't there, and it's not as applicable. This, we have much greater control, Q A, Q C, when we buy them ourselves. I just want to throw that out there.
And I'm gonna piggyback on what Lynn said. One thing we've discovered with, again, the ortho, the oblique flight once every six years, we've gone to Google Earth, and you'll have different capture dates even within the county. I mean, there's parts of the county that haven't, if you actually go look at, the last time was actually captured by Google Earth is back in the early two thousand teens, so.
Are you ortho-rectified now?
I don't know if I'm being smarter.
Right, getting closer. Project number nine comes from the ERP department and is an enhancement to our current recruiting system to provide two-way text messaging functionality. Text messages have proven to be a much more effective way to communicate with candidates, both in terms of attracting them to our career site and coordinating things like interviews, required forms, and other items. One, or an important feature of this solution is that all text messages, both sent and received, are recorded within the recruiting system. Other two-way text messaging solutions were looked at, but, but this solution would integrate directly with the recruiting system. Currently, there is only one-way text functionality in the recruiting system, and this would replace that. And that would eliminate a nineteen thousand, two hundred dollar annual expense. So costs for this, estimates for this are seventy-three thousand dollars for implementation and forty-three thousand dollars annually in the outer years. But again, this would eliminate that current texting solution, so the implementation amount wouldn't change, but the total annual spend would be, would increase by twenty-three thousand, eight hundred, not forty-three thousand. Any questions there? Is this just for recruiting of some kind? What is this for? This, this is what you use HR? Okay. And is that core requestable?
There could be, yeah. I don't, I don't know how we download it, but.
I'm sure it would be a part of, be part of our personnel records, I guess.
Well, that's why, that's a good question.
I've been going at my legal, there's personnel information in that texting back and forth that I don't.
They're not personnel, right. They would be maybe a candidate or an applicant at that. I mean, it's, there's an interview with this. No, no.
I know there are all kinds of rules around text messages. In fact, Gina Gillespie, our ERP Director, who looked into this, the, the reason she did was because there were, there was text messaging being used in recruiting going on outside of this solution. Departments would just kind of establish their own text message exchange with possible candidates, and that was a real, we felt that was a real liability. When they do it within our recruiting system now, within our career page, they opt in, you know, to receive text messages. When we send a text message, it says, you know, press question mark for help, quest, stop, text stop to stop and help, help for help, that kind of thing. So there are some strict rules. I remember when we put that one-way text messaging in place that have to be followed. And these would be, a system like this would be subject to those same types of rules.
So I assume this is done from a PC rather than a personal cell phone?
Correct.
And so would only HR be doing the texting, or is this from, for department heads to also do texting from their PCs?
Departments would have access to it, who are, who would have a, an open position, they would be able to engage in it. And then there's also another piece of, I understand that Gina might step in. If there's something that could not, sorry, if there's something that could not automatically be responded to, we would have the opportunity for a person to contact that candidate and speak to them and answer their questions.
So it sounds like more, you know, more complex messaging would be done through email. And this could be a phone call, but people like to text. I know my own, my own family likes to text when they can probably pick up the phone, but it also allows for group texting, which is also an advantage of texting over a phone call. Typically, we only have four or five people on a phone call. That's, that's a little unusual, but when two people are texting each other, it's just as easy to pick up the phone, make phone calls as well. So I'm just wondering. Yeah, I think this is nice to have. I don't know if it's.
The generation that we are recruiting into the workforce are more likely not to answer the phone, even more unlikely to answer an email. And so this is our best way to reach out and connect with those people. Maybe as soon as they hit the site or they apply for a job, we can reach right out to them, set up the interviews if they meet certain criteria. We're just trying to engage them at a quicker rate than what we're doing right now.
Okay.
Good question. Our nine-one-one has texting. Is that two-way?
I'll have to find that out. I believe it is. I believe it's, Rusty shaking, he said, yes, so yes.
Piggyback on that contract and reduce the cost if we've already got two-way texting somehow, contract to develop that.
I would defer to the IT professionals, but this integrates right into our system, so I, I don't think that would be a possibility.
So we're paying two different places to do two-way texts.
The text to nine-one-one is through the next generation nine-one-one system. I don't think it'll integrate with our with our personnel software. Software.
I haven't seen the, also Commissioner, I haven't seen the structure of the, the contract for this. Um, but our current SMS text functionality, there's a, there's a small base fee, but most of it. Most of the monthly cost is based on the text message, the, the, the amount. Of text messages that are sent and received. So it's based on usage. I think any other system that that includes text messaging would be, would be based on usage in large part as well.
Well, usually if a company is able to do something like that, like we had them to ask them to add something else, why they can work with us. Maybe reduce the cost.
Go ahead, Jake.
Gina Gillespie, I'm the ERP Director and I was, I'm not sure what EMS is using. Um, I know that the one that Sheriff. Is using, we did, uh, take a look at that and see if that was something that would be able to integrate with success factors. And it does not there. Um, it is geared, uh, specifically for law enforcement. Um, and it is actually something that they are using, um, that's not. It's not really used, um, it's actually used to, uh, speak with candidates and text them. Prior to becoming, um, an actual, uh, candidate that's applied for the job. So, um. I I know that we're saying that, um, EMS is, uh, using some texting with EMS. We'd actually have to look at how they're actually communicating with candidates. Because it was sort of the same thing that was brought up with the sheriff. That's how this kind of got started. We're like talking about that we were communicating with, uh, sheriff candidates. And found out when we take a look at the system that they were using, they were actually engaging before. They were actually applying for the jobs. They were using it more as a marketing tool, which is, is really how it was meant to be used. Uh, to engage candidates to apply for jobs in our career site. And that communication stops once they apply for the jobs. So that texting and that communication. Actually occurs prior to them applying to the job. Once they apply for the job, they no more, they no longer communicate through that application. They had a one year contract with that and they were going to, uh, take a look and see if that helped boost. Uh, the candidates that they were getting to apply and then decide if they were going to continue that. Um, but I would have to look at what the, uh, EMS was using to see if that's similar. Or or how that works to see if there would be any kind of integration. Um, we could, you know, we could certainly do that. Um, but, uh, the ones, the ones that we looked at here have a standard integration with success factors. So that does reduce the cost and fees of creating some type of, um, actual physical file feed that has to be. Sent over into the system to be able to record that text message. If that helps answer.
So these last two projects may look familiar to you, uh, as they are recurring projects, meaning I bring these to you each year for approval. Uh, you'll see the numbers change a bit each year. So the county wide PC replacement project initially appeared in two thousand and twenty. Which was shortly after Windows seven went end of life, which was really the reason this whole annual project came to be. Now, some county departments are more technology centered than others and will replace their computers, uh, every three to five years. But other departments tend to ignore replacing these mainly due to the cost. Or because their business process, business processes may not rely as much on desktop technology. However, all county computers which sit on our network. Need to run supported operating systems and applications so that we don't create a network vulnerability by running software which cannot receive updates. Um, well, they will also have to stay in compliance with, uh, CGS, uh. Policies and HIPAA policies and PCI. So the approach we take is we identify the oldest machines on the network and we work to replace them. Uh, before things like operating systems fall out of support. Uh, we approached this with a strategy of replacing one eighth each year. Applying that approach to where we are now and what we see in two thousand and twenty four, this request is to replace forty four. Excuse me, forty five laptops at one thousand, five hundred and forty four dollars each. Sixty five MCTs at two thousand, four hundred and eighty three dollars each. And a hundred and seven desktops at eight hundred and twenty five dollars each for a total of three hundred and nineteen thousand, one hundred and sixty nine dollars. And there should be a list of them, even the very specific machines, uh, attached in your pages. Uh, this is somewhat of a critical project for. Uh, this year, a critical year for this project, I should say, as Microsoft has announced the end of support for Windows ten. Which is October, two thousand and twenty five. We have a lot of machines running Windows ten out there. Uh, but we've been purchasing Windows eleven licenses. So that when we, so that we can upgrade them when the time comes, or if possible, uh, deploy the eleven, uh, Windows eleven machines currently. And then the final TRB project. Uh, to present today is the EMS fire iPad replacement program. This annual project only began a couple of years ago as a related project to the county wide PC replacement project. iPads have a, uh, little shorter life than PCs do, about four years. So rather than present a large expense every four years, we try to cycle through a fourth of these each year. The numbers changed quite a bit from last year. Um, EMS has substantially increased their fleet of iPads to close to a hundred and twenty five. Fires fleet of twenty is the same as last year. So this request is to replace one fourth of each fleet. Thirty one iPads for EMS, five for fire. iPad cost is currently six hundred and sixty eight dollars each. So this project's total amount is twenty four thousand and forty eight dollars. And there you see some of the functionality that the iPads provide for both fire and EMS. So those are the eleven TRB projects included in the TRB, uh, two thousand and twenty four budget request. Here you see the totals for expenditures in two thousand and twenty four. And what this would add each year thereafter. I guess I'm a little bit off here because of what you brought up on the case management solution. Both the second line need to come down a hundred and thirty thousand, um, because I did that on the other ones like, um. The two way text messaging, um. That's the, the annual cost was forty three and since we lose some of the current cost, I dropped those numbers down. I think, yeah, be happy to stand for any questions that you have.
You know, this is not really presented in this packet, but I'm just curious if, uh. If there is a, something I'm not aware of, but when guests come to our. Facility here, they don't really have a way to access, uh, county internet, uh, through a guest portal. In fact, I think employees also don't really have a way to do that. I was provided a login by someone to use what we call the guest portal, but it doesn't work. I have real problem with it. I have to, I have to turn it off almost immediately. It does, it just messes with my phone. So. I I think when we're in this building, especially when our guests come, it'd be nice to have, whether it's a, uh. You know, policy they have to opt into some type of policy or if it's, uh. You know, something we have a password that changes done, you know, every once in a while to make sure that, that we don't have people, uh. Uh, using our Wi Fi that are living on the sidewalk, for example, but. There ought to be a way that we provide, you know, access and a lot of people here doing business, access to. Internet while people are visiting our facility here.
Credential free?
Yeah, well, I.
Is that what you're?
Well, I don't know what that, I don't know what that means, but I think they.
Without a username and password, without.
I think they would have maybe a click. I I agree type of to a policy, a potential, that'd be fine with me, but. I don't think they have to have a username and password. And again, or, or if they want to give a, a password, we could provide a password to our guests.
Yeah.
And change it, you know, periodically, that'd be fine as well.
I know we do that in some buildings. Uh, it's very common and, you know, coffee shops, you walk in and say that it's.
Sure.
Little sign on.
Maybe we change it every couple of weeks, every month, or you know, update the password on the wall or something, but. It just seems like we ought to, they'll provide that. Even, even as a commissioner, even our, even our staff. They don't really have a, a way to access, uh. Internet on their smartphone, uh, without, they're usually using cell data, I think primarily, which is. What they're doing now.
There's, yeah, we, so we have several wireless networks. Going throughout the county locations, um, and it's just configuration options. Um, I'd like to take this to my security team and let them review that request.
Last, uh, again, this, I I'm not sure it's always been this way, but like even the last few meetings I've had in the auditorium downstairs. I log into the, the portal there and it doesn't work. So I have to get rid of it. And of course, there's no other connections or cell data down there. So. I'm basically in a, at a vacuum line during the meeting. That's sometimes is real problems. I'm looking up.
We're working on that. We're, um. Looking, we, we put a cellular antenna down there to try and get a little better signal down there. It's, it's still not very good. So we're revisiting that. Uh, Joe, do you know the status of that? I think they were working on that this week on extending that, that antenna.
Microcell extension or some sort.
Mm hmm.
It may be fine, but again, I think the internet's also a great solution, but we have to have an internet that actually works. I mean. Uh, it works fine up here, uh, on, on all the government issued stuff. But I use this from, I use this to answer more emails on my, my, my office computer. So.
Right, okay.
Thank you.
For the borrow a, uh, we gotta wrap up this pretty quick, but to borrow a, every. A question from Commissioner Beatty yesterday. So. If you had all these here, what are the top three without offending any of these departments that are all probably watching?
Right. Well, you know, that, that's. Like the hardest part of running TRB is determining this priority order.
Yeah.
Because, you know, I'm sure the appraiser could give you a priority, district attorney could give you a priority, Jack could give you a priority. Um, but as a, a, a governing board, a technology review board, uh, we try to put those as the most critical and, and down to least critical. Um, obviously.
Licensing expiring or.
Right.
End of life stuff.
Right. I mean, we have text messaging now in our recruiting system. Would, would what we're proposing here be better? Absolutely. Is it a requirement to do business? That's debatable. Um, the, uh, internet routers, those are pretty critical to us. So those are at the top of the list. So my answer to your question, uh, chairman would be, that's the prioritized order.
I think it's not a real fair question, but I appreciate it.
One more question. Yeah, go ahead. Thank you, Chairman. Just, um, since we have the, uh, technology fund. Legislatively solved for ourselves, one of my, one of my, uh, uh, goals in doing and working towards that. Would allow us to save for. Technology we know not of. Um, for example. If we knew we had a, uh, say, you look at the last few years and say, we on average spend this much money. Every year on hardware, this much money every year on, on software, the technology side of that, uh. The software side of that, I think we, we could try to level out our budgets a little bit. And just say, we're going to put back, pick a number, you know, an average number. Uh, with some type of anticipated growth, you know, reasonable growth to that. And just say, it's not necessarily earmarked for these exact projects. We just fund, we fund that, we fund the fund. With a reasonable amount of money. And then we determine during the year, how to spend that money as our needs come to us. Again, it's a different way of doing it. It's kind of like what we do right now with our EcoDevo fund. We just fund EcoDevo and we. We know certain parts of that are earmarked, but there's also things come to us during the year. And we make decisions during the year on how to spend those funds that we put in there. So. I I like to, you know, these are all, uh, specific things. We find that exactly what as it is presented, I mean, these are all going to be. Approved at a budget on option, but I guess I might maybe change the way we do this and say, we fund a chunk of money. And then we continue to work on our priority list as the year goes through, as we go through the year, just a little bit. So. Change the way we do, way we do business here in Central County.
Before you change, so one of the issues we had a few years ago, they didn't know what we were spending. And that, that's why we created TRB so that we know exactly what we're spending on IT. So I like know exactly what we're spending on IT.
I I don't disagree with that at all. I think we have to know what we're spending on IT, on IT. And I think that's imperative. What I'm just simply saying is. This is a very exact list. We're trying to get all, you said you made, you added ten pages today. Okay. This is very great. Uh, this is a great presentation. I should say it was in the book, added ten pages today. Um, great presentation, but I know everyone's scrambling, trying to get us all the data and they're kind of rushing to. To satisfy the county commissioners and. What I'm saying is if we knew we're going to put in a chunk of money. We don't have to rush it necessarily trying to get all, all this on the same day. Today, and then when we adopt the budget, you know, that exact day, we're approving all these projects at one time. We just simply just, you know, for round numbers, just say we put two million dollars into that every year or two point five into that every year, whatever the number is going to be. And then we would, we would see these projects come to us, we would take and consider each one of them as they come up. Um, during the year and hopefully have, you know, be very judicious on how we actually spend the money. We approve it as they come. Just wait, again, I'm not suggesting we don't keep track of it. I'm simply just suggesting that we. Don't necessarily have an exact list when we adopt the budget. We just simply. Earmark a big chunk of money to the TRB and then we'll figure out how that's going to be utilized. After the budget's adopted.
I think we have a lot of, um. Decisions to make with regard to the equipment reserve fund. Uh, we have some policy ideas in mind already. We've, I just spent time talking to EMS yesterday. Um, we'll come to the commission with some ideas and we can incorporate some of those comments and we can have a, a good. Conversation about how you all want to do that here before long.
Excellent, Mr. Commissioner, so.
It's time for you to go.
Well, again, like, since the chairman is not here, I'll just say, is there any other comments or questions we need to, to chew on before we adjourn this today's budget hearing? Well, let me just say this, everyone did a really good job and, uh, I have one question. Are these going to be? I've been looking for these on YouTube. I'm, I'm not seeing them there. Is that something that they're being added to YouTube at some point or? What's the plan? Is there some reason why we're not streaming these, put them on YouTube?
They're, they started going up last night. I saw the first three.
Okay.
Up. So they're, they're putting them out there.
Okay, great. That's, that's excellent. I want to make sure we have open government. So, all right, everyone, thanks. Good job and we'll be adjourned.